Part two of the town hall with the city council candidates last week. If you didn't make it, that livestream is still available. We had Lou Martínez and Mark Kyris on our livestream part one. You can still view that at the 1776 Sons of Liberty Facebook page. Again, tonight, you can share this livestream or view it later. It's going to be available on our page for quite some time. We're going to start tonight's with Shane Strong. If you want to call out Shane. Shane is running for city council. District. E. So Shane is running for district E position. Just mic check. Is your mic on?
Two clocks. Chat, chat.
All right. Thank you for coming. I'm going to cut the mic and then again, go out about 30 minutes. If you needed the time, take the time. If you don't, then we'll open it up for questions.
Sure. No, I'd be more happy to answer. Good evening, county region. I serve on Longfield Advisory Committee along with serving as volunteer for the Kings County Commission on Aging. Also volunteer for the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce along with the Latin Professionals Association here in Kings County. A little bit about myself. Born, raised in Tulare. I have a transplant. A lot of folks are. Been here for the last six years due to my employment. But one of the things that I felt strongly about is being involved in the community. It's very, very much being involved. I'm one of those that likes to get out there and work hard and work for the community. Doing so, I also went to school at College of Coles. Served as student senate president there from 2017, 2018. So a little longer life there at the school. So during that timeframe, when I saw deficiencies in CLS, one of the things I did was I worked with our board, our student executive board, along with Stan Carrizosa, who was superintendent president at the time. And we worked hard to do a lot of deficiencies of CLS. The coffee court was in disarray. There was a lot of infrastructure projects around the school that was completely disastrous. Not much there. During my time, we actually gave $10,000 for the coffee court renovation over at CLS. And lastly, we did the hydration stations at all three campuses, Tulare, here in Hanford, and Visalia. So that's where I kind of started my public service, getting involved and getting started. From there afterwards, went on to work in the California State Legislature for the state assembly. Worked for Assemblyman Devin Mathis as his district field representative. And during that time, there was a lot of deficiencies that we saw here in Central Valley. One of the projects or one of the bills that we tried to bring in was to stop, basically, when you see people dumping on the side of the road at farmlands or even the city in some places when it's dark at night, you have to clean it up. We wanted to make sure that we find those folks to make sure that that issue was resolved. Unfortunately, the Democratic State Legislature decided not to pass that bill. And it still continues to this day that there is nothing there that stops them from doing that, which is kind of unfortunate. So a little bit more on our and the community. I ran for city council 2018, narrowly lost to Councilman Briano, who is currently on the council. From there, I didn't say no to public service. I kept going. I kept on going. And I've been attending council meetings along with being involved in the Parks Commission. Served my first year just kind of learning out like everyone else would do. It's just kind of feeling it and how it goes. The next year, my colleagues were gracious enough to appoint me as vice chair, where I have served the last three years on the Parks Commission as the vice chair. From there, about two years ago, the KCAB, the Kings County Association of Governments, appointed me to the San Joaquin Valley Rail Committee, or other words, ANTRAP. So I served on the board of directors there for our county as representative. Former mayor Dave Ayers, you know, the representative who serves on the committee. We have been hardworking at making sure that a lot of projects happen here in Hanford. One of the projects I'm proud about that just happened here in August is that we were able to get $2.1 million in grant money from the federal government of the Transportation Infrastructure Bill that will help improve our train station right here in the city of Hanford. And because of the fact that we have the largest ridership on the entire line, it helped us much more than that in depth. So proud of that. Also making sure, helping our seniors through the Kings County Commission on Aging during the pandemic. Out of my own pocket, I spent hundreds, if not more hundreds of dollars out of my own pocket to help our seniors across Kings County. So basically helped out during that time because during that time, seniors couldn't get out. Seniors couldn't be able to go get the necessities they needed. So I helped bring to them under collaboration with the Kings County Commission on Aging. Also helped with their drive-through food banks and meals on wheels as well too. Also helped with the Kings County, Tulare Kings, excuse me, Hispanic Chamber. Served on the Legislative Affairs Committee because I did serve in the legislature. So I did have some insight on what we could do for that. And then also lastly, served on the Latino American Professionals Association with Carol Brandonz. And just recently, we did our Taco Truck Throwdown, which I called Code Share with, where we raised thousands of dollars in scholarship funds for our local students. So really proud of that because it was successful and it is going to a big cause for our community. So you kind of know a little bit about me and my background as far as experience goes. Kind of want to talk about issues that we're facing here in the city of Hanford and also in District D. So there's four deficiencies that I've identified in our district. One of them is going to be homelessness. The other is going to be water. The other is going to be our parks. And we'll get to that a little bit towards the end there. And then of course, one of the other deficiencies that we are facing is infrastructure. And those four are identified as major critical issues not only happening in District D but our city of Hanford. So I'll start with infrastructure. So the first thing about that is when we look at our district in general and even in some parts of our city outside of District D, we look at what we see as sidewalks, curvy gutters, storm drains. We look at stop signs. We look at yield signs. We look at all these different things that are basically in a very huge deficiency in our city. The last Public Works Director that we had wasn't big on a lot of these different things. And it was either a hazard or it was basically something that it was not warranted. So when we're looking at these things, we're seeing cars speeding down Plum Avenue. Or we're seeing cars speeding down Bondview Lane. Or we're seeing cars speeding down anywhere in our city, down Greenfield or Centennial for that matter. That is a problem because in the last 10 years alone, we've had traffic studies that have shown that it's not warranted. But yet, the growth of our community with Silver Oaks, with the division by subdivision near Greenfield and Centennial. We have seen a lot of growth in that area since then. We need to do, look at crosswalks where our kids are going to Sierra Pacific. We need to look at stop signs, yield signs, and other deficiencies that have been lacking for over a decade in our city. It's imperative that we have that. And mostly on the south side too, because it's an older area in the city. And everyone I've talked to has said loud and clear, we are tired of the speeding. We are tired of the safety road hazards that are going on. And I'm tired of my kids' life being in jeopardy trying to go to Mark Luther King or to Sierra Pacific High School. It's a sad state of affairs, but we need a representative who's going to be on the city council to address these concerns either through town halls or on the council itself or one-on-one. Any way that we can be able to get and figure, to talk with their representative on these issues. The other issue too is on infrastructure. Is how many of you are tired of the trains that are clogging up our city each and every day? That a train goes by, stops in the middle of town, and you can't get over it. The only alternative is 198. I know a lot of you have probably had to stop at some of these areas of which the train for a good 15, 20 minutes. There is an answer to that. And the answer is Grange Hill. Grange Hill Undercrossing or Overcrossing depending on how you talk to them. It's a $40 million, plus the $40 million in debt. However, in the last few years, the discussion has been more volatile. The city has tried going through David Valdano's office. Unfortunately, no money. Couldn't I do it? We went through Senator Hurtado's office. No money, no grant money. But the fact of the matter is, how many of you actually know that our city council members sit on committees and commissions aside from sitting on the dais every day? Not many of you probably. So we have a committee called KCAB, which I basically said earlier. Kings County Association of Governments. Kings County Association of Governments is basically the infrastructure transportation hub, if you will, in Kings County. They are the ones that help us with a lot of our projects that you see wokely here in Hanford or anywhere around Kings County. So one of the things that I want to do as your representative, or volunteer, is ensuring that you have a quality voice and experienced voice on that commission or committee. Because we have to receive that money one way or the other. And the last thing I'm going to do is raise your taxes to do it. I'm endorsed by the Central Valley Taxpayer Association because one thing I will tell you is the one thing I will definitely not do is try to raise your taxes. I will look through every single means necessary to ensure that we have the necessary resources and tools such as grant opportunities that our city has done very well at in the last four or five years. We have done very, very well at getting that grant opportunity. And the thing is, is that we are going to move forward as a representative if elected to go after more of those grants of a representative. It's because of experience, folks. It's a lack of thereof. And we need that. It's very, very imperative that we have people that understand these issues. And whoever represents you on these major committees are the ones responsible to help you get the funding necessary. You know, I, I, last four years, you know, we have seen nothing coming from these committees, aren't we? You know, these are the people that represent us. They're our friends. And we need someone who's strong on the issue, who will be able to network and get these things done for our city. You know, we have this underpass that's going to cost us close to $40 million. We can work together collaboratively with the state and with the federal government to get these things accomplished. And I know it's a luxury here, but we are going to work hard these next four years. And that's one of my goals, to get that completed, to grant funding opportunities without having to use budget money or taxes. The other part of it is, is that how many of you know about our wastewater treatment plant? How many of you gone out there? I know a few of you have. Gary, okay? I went out there about a few months ago and it's an enlightening experience to get to learn a few things. Well, one thing I can tell you is our wastewater treatment plant, it is outdated. It's very much outdated. It's not one that has the technologies such as like Tulare, Visalia have. In fact, how many of you knew that we actually have, when a farmer wants water, if we were to give farmers our water, leftover water, which is our gray water, how many of you knew that we have to pay them to take our water? We pay them to take our water. Meaning, our infrastructure is so outdated that we have to pay them to take our water because it's not curable for potable crops or food crop. That's horrible. We need to, that was another thing that we actually went to David Valdano's office on. No money. Sent our talks off. No money. That's why experience matters, so that we can be able to go in, represent, and get these funds available for grant opportunities such as we've done in parks. And I'll get to that a little bit later. But it's imperative that we look at grant opportunities every step of the way to ensure that we can have a quality tertiary water supply here in the city of Hanford so that we're not investing, we're not giving money away for water or farms. We want to be able to be other cities, other communities where we'll sell it and make the money back that we've lost. That's the progress we should be doing right now. That's what we should be doing. Okay? So those are two things I've identified in my, my time. The other portion is, is we're looking at water. Water was brought up at the last meeting. And the answer was also asked, or the answer that was given was that water is not a local issue. I completely disagree with that statement. As long as, along with, everyone probably in this room called for you. Water is not just a state, federal issue. It is a local issue right here at home. How many of you knew that the city of Kalinda, by the end of this month, will probably have no water available to their city there? None. They are fighting with the state right now because the state told them they have to go to market to purchase their acre water or acre foot of water to, for their city. And you know what? The state said, can't help you. Can't do anything. You're going to have to do other means. Maybe Kalinda possibly have to steal water from another community to cover their water per acre foot for their community. That's, that's horrible. Why would we want someone to steal water from another community? That should not be happening. Look at Lindsay. Years ago, as you're well aware, they have their water drainage. The groundwater was completely tainted. It was, it was completely, you can't use it. It was poisoned because it's all around. They depend 100% on surface water from the Font Curran canal. Now, when I started, when I worked in the legislature, myself and some of the math is our first deal together was a gentleman named Mario Santoya, who was the director of the Font Curran Water Authority, came to the office, myself and his assemblymen sat down. And the first thing he told me is, Shane, I want you to start taking notes. I said, sure. Started taking notes, wrote about four or five pages of notes. Went in there completely not understanding a thing of water, like most people. They don't understand it as much as I do. And I still left that meeting not understanding. It's such a convoluted mess with all these different, you know, as far as irrigation districts, owners, the delta, everything. It's a convoluted mess that's completely crazy. And I will tell you though, that wokely, a lot of communities have taken upon themselves to do something with water. I'll give you an example. Back in 2005, 2006, the city of Tulare, Visalia had, first of all, how many of you play frisbee golf? Anybody play frisbee golf? Moody's Grove? Maybe? Yeah, frisbee golf, okay. So you've been to Moody's Grove? No? Okay. So back in Moody's Grove, you know, the sheriff's substation, there's a huge basin there. And it's because the city of Tulare and the city of Visalia formed with a joint powers of thought. They came together and said, you know what? We have to worry about those droughted days that are coming up. Because we're here. It's happened. They knew ahead of time. Because 10, 12 years later, 15 years later, we're here. The droughts hit, but they were smart. They created something that no other city has pretty much done. A joint powers authority that created one of the largest water banking deposit basins in the South Valley. It is one of the largest ones. And guess what? They're not facing issues right now because they can tap it out water when there's a drought. City of Hanford has a large recharge program, but it's not as great as the one in Visalia. My goal is to work hard and work collaboratively. It doesn't matter if it's the city of Moore. It doesn't matter if it's with the state. As long as we can be able, as long as we're able to work together as a team with the city and other communities so we can come together and say, look, this is a big issue. We've got to do something about it. And we can do the same replication as the city of Tulare and the city of Visalia when Craig made that and Bondview were there. It can happen, folks. There's no can, can. But to say it's not a local issue, it's a grosser state. It is. It's a serious issue and it's done locally. And I vow to fight for our wide rights in water, especially locally. Oh, by the way, how many of you knew that the city of Hanford had a groundwater representative to the state for the state of California? How many of you know that there is a city council member that sits on that committee? The Groundwater State Sustainability Act that we have locally here? Nobody, right? Her name is Diane Sharp. She is your representative to that committee. I've heard work and it's one of the most important issues because why? We're about to meter every single farmer by 2030. Every farmer is going to be metered. The state of California has said it loud and clear. You will be metered. Every county is facing an issue and they're basically regulating how much water we can use. Tell me that's not a local issue. Your city council member sits on that bill. And I've heard one thing. We are going to change that November 8. We're going to make sure that we have a voice on that. We're going to make sure that we have voices across the city on these different committees that are represented. Now, on my county building a parks, as parks commissioner, I will tell you there is some deficiencies. I'm not going to assure about that. I know that there's some deficiencies. And I'll tell you why. So for the past three years, first of all, let me just say Brad Albert has been an amazing director for us. He's done a lot of great work, a lot of great work, no matter how you say it. Now, I will tell you that there's a few pieces of misinformation that was made at the last meeting. The first one I want to basically break out is this. Not one time, not one time have we turned away a student, a kid, a senior, or anybody from the Longfield gym. Not one time. I address this issue because I want to make sure it's crystal clear. And this is why it's important to attend commission meetings and city council meetings and get the facts. We need to have people that actually take the time and gather information personally. I attend the meetings. I attend those meetings. I either watch it or I attend it personally and make sure to understand it. If people attend those meetings and understand that no one has been left behind in that gym for our city. Not one kid, not one, in fact, I'll go even further. We offer signing skill and scholarship opportunities for the gym at Longfield. Anyone can go. No one's going to be turned away. In fact, those scholarship opportunities are still outstanding for day camp and for winter camp and summer camp for the kids. Not once has these sponsored activities ever been denied to anybody, including a winner or a loser. We have always been able to do that for kids. Not once. That is a huge misunderstanding. If they attend the meetings, they don't understand that. Not secondhand information. Second one is, is that about a tutoring lab? Our tutoring lab that we just recently built. First off, pre-COVID, students were doing tutoring from Hanford Elementary. We had a contract with them. Hanford Elementary came in and was able to do tutoring. Okay? During COVID, we had to stop that because of the mandates and everything that the state said, which we all disagreed with. But the fact of the matter is, the information that was presented at the last meeting when I brought it up, would tell you that we actually have a STEM lab going in there where students are able to go in and work on their specific degrees that they're wanting to work on and be able to use that advantage to further their education. That's why it's important that we understand. Because it's those things, it's things that misinformation against the community that people don't know they have this misconception of. Attend a meeting. So you guys, our parks commission meetings are always on a Monday, the second Monday of every week. Attend. We'll definitely bring it to you. Okay? Our parks, new playgrounds have been maintained. We've got new playgrounds at Lacy, at Centennial, at Lakewood, and other places to grant opportunities for POCC8 funding. We also were able to get beautification projects at Hidden Valley along with Centennial and other parks are on the way. There are new projects that are happening. Every single, like fitness opportunities as well too. Fitness court and that's, and, and so just so everyone knows, the fitness court in Valley was paid 75% through sponsorships. And Venice Health was the largest sponsor of that particular fitness court. So I want to make sure that that is understood as well too, because there's a lot of misconception out there about that. We try our hardest to make sure that taxpayer funded funding is very equitable when we do these projects. It's a little non-deductible. That includes when I want to, I'll get it out there. When it comes to staffing, we've had some staffing issues. We have, there's no doubt about that. We have seen in the city, the efficiencies that have been, weeds and everything that are growing up. I get it. I totally get it. That's fixed now. Last two weeks alone, we have hired nine new staff members for our parks. And now they're out there working hard to ensure that our city is back to beautification standards and ensuring that we have that. Includes Hidden Valley, includes Centennial and other places. I know a lot of people are asking about Hidden Valley Park too, where I stand on that. I support the park. I support Hidden Valley. I think it's very imperative that Hidden Valley does get that acreage and does become a park. It's imperative. You know, that was an agreement back in, what, the 60s, 70s? I think Stan Ham was mayor at the time. That was an agreement. We want to ensure that agreement stays true. And now that we have the staffing and those levels will continue to rise, we'll do that. A lot of folks also talk about Heroes Park. So Heroes Park, if I wasn't mistaken, was, was said that it's coming out of the city budget. Most of that's not true. 8.5 million here from POCC8 funding. That comes from the state of California. How that works is, is you have to drop a PIN according to our directive. The PIN will go into an area that's low income and that's where it is. It's only going to be used for existing or new parks. However, existing parks for the city of Hanford is rare, very rare. In fact, reserved only for cities like Los Angeles, San Francisco, that are landlocked. So it has to be a new park because it's under the governor's mandate that tells us we have more green space in our city for, and all communities for that benefit. We're working hard to make sure these things happen. We had 8.5 million, 1.9 million for the recreational aspect of that park. All grants. Your taxes were not raised in that process, nor did come from the city budget. That's a win. That's a steal. And to include that, one of the things for the last two years that I saw a vision for our community that we lack was trails, class one trails, bike and pedestrian trails for our city. We received a Caltrans grant for $224,000 that is going to help us get the ball rolling to get the transportation plan up from 2016 to now that will include class one trails because every city has Visalia, Tulare, Kingsburg, you name it. Baker's Road, Fresno. We don't have one. So during the time, we worked with the People's Ditch Company to build a large trail that's a pedestrian and bike path between Flint and Houston. We are already working on phase one, which is basically Flint to Hidden Valley Park. That's huge for our city. The beginning of something of a vision that we can have, that we've never had before and other communities have. And now it's our time to start going in that direction. The master plan that we did five, six years ago, basically said, we basically said from you folks and other folks in the community said loud and clear, trails and paths and bike paths are the number one issue. It is. A lot of people said loud and clear, they want to see something like that. They want to go out and be able to run it, go biking or whatever. You know, so this is the first phase of something of a vision of our community that we've never had. And then kind of touching into homelessness, I know a lot of people have that issue with homelessness and the community. So the county of Kings along with other counties is the lowest form of state government. It is. It is what provides health and human services agency. It's what provides for planning and all these different issues, different things. So one of the things I will tell you is this. We need to work closely with our churches. And I think we've been doing a decent job of that. However, we need to be more focused with the county as well too. Social services along with mental health and health and human services. Because there is mental health aspects to the homeless. Now, we have been working hard and we need to continue this. It's working with social services to continue getting Operation Room Key funding, which is imperative. Operation Room Key funding is what is helping us with the shelters and housing that you see near where the old Stardust Hotel in the south side of town. When we're able to house the homeless, we're able to make it, we're able to get them either out of parks, off the street, and transition them hopefully through mental health services and into society again with some sort of job that will help them with their needs. We've got to do something. We've got to do something. I don't have an easy fix, but it is somewhat, it's an idea. And all we can come up with is ideas to come up with a solution. And that is something that we can definitely work on. Working with the county, working with our churches to help. Right now, the Kings County, Kings-Tulare Homeless Alliance has identified 314 homeless folks right here in Kings County, most of them right here in the city of Hanford. That's a, that's a pretty big number, especially when you're looking at Hanford alone, most of the time. So if you have that issue, that's a, that's a, that's a big issue and we've got to solve it. And it's only going to get bigger. So I'm helping out as much as I can, running to make the difference, of course. I know I don't have all the answers, but hopefully I can definitely help in some way. I feel that I have the experience necessary to solve some of these issues and to work hard for the people of Hanford. Because again, it's not just about District D. It's about the city of Hanford in general. When you're, when you're up on that dais making a decision, it's about the city of Hanford, not District D. The city of Hanford. And we've got to work hard. And there's some other issues that are coming down the ways such as PERS, unfunded liability. That's going to hit us hard, paying $400,000 a year until we cap it $5.6 million in 2024, 2025 budget. And then they're paying the accrued fees on top of that. It's huge, folks. It's a big deal. And it can bankrupt a lot of these cities. But luckily, the city of Hanford has done something great. 28 to 30% put away subsidy to ensure that we at least have three years of public safety protection because that's what we need in case of a budget deficit. That's smart thinking. Because when you have money subsidy to help us, that's secure, especially when it comes to public safety. The last thing we want is where we cannot be able to fund public safety. Say aside, for three years, 20 to 30% of the unfunded liabilities are about to slam hidden community in the state and most of them can't even solve the problem. We're on top of it. And we got to continue that. And that's why, again, experience matters in this race. And there is a clear reason. Thank you, Luke Clark.
Let's get my hand. We're going to open it up for questions from the audience. Again, like I said, I've got a couple of questions. We'll move on to the audience. But again, remain professional. Make sure your questions are perfect and they're straight. And let's keep it clean. All right, first question I have is, and it's kind of something that's near and dear to my heart that I've kind of brought up at city council meetings and you might have hit on. What do you see in the future growth of Hanford to be if we don't have enough water to run it, especially we have it currently? Do you think that we should continue building houses?
So as most people know, in every community, there's no stopping housing. There's not. In fact, most communities rely heavily on the impact fees that come from that housing, those subdivisions that come in. That's how the city pays for its services such as public works, police and fire, all these different things. Impact fees are the mother's milk, if you will, of how our city runs, operates, and every, in every area of it. You know, the old saying goes, wherever sewer goes, is where a home goes as well too. And the thing is, is that there's no stopping housing. But what can we do? And he had, and, and you do bring up a good point. And that's why it's imperative that we start looking at water banking. Because the fact is, is nowhere around us is going to have water. But you can't stop the growth because there's nothing that says you can't stop it. What you're going to make an order in states illegal to, build homes, you can't. So what we can do is we can do a smart So, what we can do is we can do a smart growth process. Because right now, we see growth happening in every aspect of the city. Doesn't matter if it's the south side, the north side, the east side, or the west side. We're growing. High speed rail comes in, it's going to be larger and bigger. But the fact of the matter is, we can plan ahead. Water being the critical issue with water recharge programs and a solid water recharge program that we have, uh, in the city would be solid for all of us. And even working with our partners across the way, that more would be better because of that joint powers would help us out greatly. We've got to solve these problems. It takes, it doesn't, I mean, these are problems that are going to happen and we just have to come up with a solution for it. And the growth isn't going to stop as much as we want to say it isn't. It is. It's going to keep going. And, but we can do smart planning, smart growth for that process.
My second last question is, uh, I've, I've asked it to every person I've had up here last week is, traffic circles, if it comes to vote in your own council, what is your decision?
So, so you heard, uh, so last week it was said, uh, my opponent opposed it, before he was sworn in. Thing is, I'm not going to flip-flop on this yet. I've been opposed for a bit since the beginning. I'll tell you what the answer is. So, when I had a chance to talk with John Boyle before he retired, one of the things that I discussed with him is, what is an alternative? What are options? We didn't get options available to the table. We just said, put these traffic circles on, the ARPA funding, let's do it. The fact of the matter is, is there is an option. So, in fact, some of them were on board. There's two options actually. You can do the one ways, or you can do the streetlights. Now, I had a chance to talk with John and Mario about the streetlight auction. Streetlight auction, actually, is a very good option. Because why? Because you have three intersections local. Let me tell you. The streetlight auction repair, you save nine hundred thousand dollars in the ARPA funding. That's money that can go to small business grant opportunities. That's money that can go towards the soda breaks downtown and keeping that money downtown. But the fact of the matter is, I've been opposed to traffic circles. Update, the streetlights are currently there. Because let's look at it from this angle. Forty-five dollars a signal. That's what they say because of the fact they're using a cell phone charger. How many of you knew that downtown, along with these other places, uh, these other signals are using, paying forty-five dollars to do their traffic, their, uh, their signals? Forty-five dollars a signal. Forty-five dollars, that's five hundred and, what's that? Hundred, so basically, it will take nine, or no, I'm sorry, a hundred and thirty-nine years from now to get up to nine hundred thousand dollars. And those streetlights, for only the last six years, I proposed that we do the forty-five dollars because the fact of the matter is, I'd rather have the nine hundred thousand now to help our small businesses, to help our, uh, you know, for upgrades or even starting a small business and keeping it downtown a little cleaner. So it helps others. We want to see business downtown. And the fact is, is if we go to, if we go the traffic signal route, that's a better option. Because it's saving us money. And the long term, let's face it, sixty years, fifty years from now, the streetlights are going to be redone anyway. So you're not going to sign the, the nine hundred thousand dollars. But the fact is, is we have other things that could damage those traffic circles in the long term. We have a newly bussying, uh, hub that's coming to Harris Street, okay? Cart is moving to Harris. Imagine a bus going around those traffic circles, or imagine a semi going around those traffic circles. Our damaged Hanford sign over on Forty-Three. And then you have other aspects of it too, larger vehicles that could damage it. It's bad medicine for Hanford, bad medicine for downtown.
Thank you, Gary.
I'm just kind of wondering who or what made the decision for the underpass, for the, uh, thing on the base while opposed to, um, Lacy was at much of what's more impactful?
Yeah, that was, that, that was a cheaper option. Because you don't have to really pull those, the homes that are in that aspect. Whereas if you went to, uh, for Lacy, uh, you're actually going to be doing a lot more damage than actually helping. So that's a fact. Yeah, so I agree with you. What's that? Right, I understand. Um, how, so Tulare did it where they did the under, under one over on Barbsley. They had the overpass on Cart Mill. We were trying to get an idea because we had one ninety-eight on one end and we had Grange Hill on the other. So if you have the underpass at one and you have one ninety-eight on the other, uh, and you're, and it's costing less for the city. And also, uh, schematically for the city, it actually helps out more too. If you think of the grand scheme, it's because of public safety. When you're looking at public safety response times go lower because you have the police department and you have the fire station one that's right off of Grange Hill that's able to access the north side until we get another fire station accessible to that area, which is the next one up. So, that is one of the reasons why Grange Hill is a spike.
On the same topic, you're talking about spending forty million dollars to correct one road, Grange Hill whole park. There's a free option that nobody's spoken about. North of Hanford, in Lakewood, in the middle of the field with zero intersections, there are double tracks. South of Hanford, in the middle of the field, with zero roadways, there's double tracks. Why aren't you working with BNSF for free to get them to stop out there and wait for the opposing train without affecting any traffic? And also, why is the city and the county, which doesn't apply to here, not giving something, a probably terrible road rate, uh, road rate crossings and we have to carry our vehicles up?
I can understand. I can understand. So, being the train buff that I am, and people will call me what they call a foamer if you are in the train world. In fact, this was not originally why I wanted to, I actually wanted to be a locomotive engineer when I grew up. So, uh, that's one of the things. Uh, love trains. But unfortunately, there is a couple of aspects. So, people, so when it comes to great crossings, saving Hanford has nothing, has no power of that. The only power of that is BNSF. Now, can the city lobby and tell them to fix it? Absolutely. And that's what they should be doing. There is, right now, I don't know if you guys saw, there's a great, there's a great crossing at, uh, at, what's it called? At Lacy, I think. Is it Lacy? Yes, at Lacy. There's a little screwdriver screw that's popping up, pops on this tire. Yeah, understand. And it just takes, it just takes, all it takes, it's working with BNSF. And that's why it's, if you're on KCTAC, working on, work with the folks on BNSF. But the fact of the matter is, when you mentioned, now going to your question on, uh, the over, underpass, again, BNSF worked with us on that. That was the cost they gave us. BNSF was the one who gave us that cost at Grange Hill.
Everybody that lives in the city, voting for you or your family, also travel, like, very well.
Right, but, but.
Is not going to stop them from blocking all the rest of the roads.
So, two things. I'm going to answer your question. The first thing is, is why this was chosen was, was within the city of, the city of Hanford's city limits. It's what we were able to do. So we're trying to be able to fix that problem within the city limits of the city of Hanford. Now, your other question could be is, how the city of Hanford collaborated with the county board supervisors along with BNSF and others to do it out near Flint and Excelsior and all those locations? Anywhere that's north of town or even south of town to that amount? That question I don't know, but I will give that answer for you. But otherwise, as far as the city goes, within the city limits, Grange Hill is set up at that price because BNSF made it that way because of the side track they have next to the Grange Hill, uh, break crossing. And they said that, they cited that the reason why the cost went up so much.
You, you said that, uh, high speed rail is going to impact Hanford in a great way.
Oh, yeah.
No, I, I, it may differ with you. Hanford, uh, most people home don't know it. There's twenty-seven stops on the high speed rail. Hanford is number twenty-seven. And the building area that you see out there behind the red barn is a circus center where they're going to be working high speed trains. So how, if we're number twenty-seven and there's only twenty-five stops, how is that going to impact us unless we go to Court Grand or Wasco or Fresno?
I can answer that question. So, being on the board of directors for Amtrak, the discussion has already been raised. And the state, along with the board, want to move our Hanford, our local Hanford train station, Amtrak, out to Costco when that is completed. They're going to merge Amtrak line from Bakersfield to Merced on that existing line to pay, to not pay as much on right-of-way fees that they paid at BNSF. Our station downtown, in the next eight to ten years, might not even be there. It will be over there until the full high speed rail is completed. I see a lot of nods, but let me tell you something. Myself, Dave Ayers, along with our colleagues in Kern County, along with Fresno County, have opposed this vehemently. They're moving the station from Bakersfield downtown over Clearacross to the middle of nowhere when the taxpayers put in thirty million dollars to that train station in downtown Bakersfield. That's ridiculous. And now they want to talk about moving our station to Costco. That's absurd. We are the highest traffic line. We're pouring two point one million into renovations and improvements. It makes no sense to do that. And I vehemently oppose that. And that's why it's important that we have representative. Because even when you're elected, you still sit on that committee, but on the other part of that joint power authority. That's why it's imperative we have someone who understands and has knowledge on that, who's been opposing it from the start. Because I'm not big on high speed rail. Let me tell you, this has caused a lot of devastation to our community. It's caused a lot of headache and it's cost our farmers. It's a, it's a ridiculous notion that is never going to be completed. It really is. And one thing I would tell you is, I've been fighting hard with our colleagues in Bakersfield, in Kern County, Fresno County and others to stop this from happening. Because if that happens, it's going to devastate our downtown economy. It's going to devastate the folks that want to go to all these functions. It's going to be huge because we're moving to the, to the east side of town. It makes no sense to put it in the middle of nowhere. And it's devastating for our downtown. I think I will make sure, I'll vehemently oppose any move of our station and vehemently oppose anything like that. You got my word?
Thank you. All right.
My question is on transparency.
Sure.
And, uh, my statement is wrong. Anybody can correct me. But supposedly, California, the water, around fourteen minutes from Hanford, city manager decided to put it, you know, wherever we wanted it, after the decent. The other half went to, uh, put their time in, round the box.
Sure.
I didn't know anything about it, you know, and I don't know who else did or did not.
Sure.
But also, uh, since you mentioned her name, I'll mention it also. Darlene, uh, voted for those things. It's a conflict of interest because she has business over there. And it seems like, uh, some, some people are playing, following the leader for whatever reason, making, uh, okay. Uh, I think they're the lone citizens. But there's no transparency with the state of the people in Hanford. Uh, what do you think?
What do you think about that?
Yeah. Yeah, transparency is life. Absolutely. We could get along more, but it could have been more starting. We could have done a lot more to a lot of these different projects. You know, when I, when I set my commission meetings, it's sad because I try to post every single day, on my Facebook anyway, the agendas and everything when it comes to our meeting, because I want to be as transparent as possible. But unfortunately, I get maybe three people that come to my meetings. One of them is Bob Robbins. Uh, Lou Martinez on occasions and others. You know, I want to see more activity. So one of the things that I propose, and I did this four years ago, I still want to do it. I don't care if, if the city manager proposed it or not. I don't care that if certain people don't want to come, but I want to give it an option, is town halls. You can say whatever you want about town halls. Town halls are a viable option because in my district, a lot of folks are working a lot. We're a working class district, even in the demographics. We work a lot. And this is, it's time, sometimes we can't go to council meetings. So the best option is, is to gain that information to the public the best way possible. There's a few options. One, like I said, town halls. The other is, is meeting with your representative one-on-one at a coffee shop or, or wherever, you know, to talk about issues. One thing that I want to do is use the conference room, city hall, to be able to meet with everybody, bring the coffee and donuts and have a civil discussion, how to discuss those issues. I want to be as open and transparent as possible to the people. Because it's imperative. Because if you don't have that information, how are you able to understand? And that's why we're this predicament today. We're this predicament because no one knew about North Star, no one knew about these other projects that are happening in the city. And unfortunately, what's happened is, is people just got upset and unfortunately, people didn't have the knowledge or, or anything about it. We're going to change that. My goal is to make sure that you have a voice, that you are able to bring either your ideas, your comments, even your concerns, or if you want to yell at me straight up, I have no problem with that. I mean, I can yell down my employees and my business every single day. So I'm okay with that. I want you to admit, tell me what it is that we need to do. I want to be as accessible to you, to you, to you, to everyone in this room. Because it's imperative that we have someone that is represented. I don't care if you're in District A, or District B, or C, or D. Come to me. Give me a call. I have it on my brochure. That's my personal cell phone number. Give me a ring. Well, yeah, doesn't matter what time of day or, you get midnight if you want to call me for all I hear. But I want to make sure your voice is heard. Because that's imperative. That's what we are. We're stewards. We are representatives to you. That's all we are. And every four years, you can either vote a man in or you can vote a man out. And that's how it goes. But I want to be as transparent as possible.
We're going to take the last question from Bob, but, uh, as Shane said, you, you got his number. So if you have any questions you weren't able to ask, feel free to call him.
Or even after this meeting, I'm available to.
Yeah, Shane, uh, the, um, general plan, twenty thirty-five general plan update, says that we will have a population that met at ninety thousand by year thirty-five. Uh, one of my, um, real concerns is public safety. I did not hear you mention public safety at all. Uh, both fire, we're short fire stations.
Sure.
We're short, we're short staff. Police department, we're short, uh, uh, we need to re, re, uh, rebuild that fire, that police station. Maybe move it to another location. I, I don't know what you mean down there. But we're short, uh, staff and, uh, we need staff in the future. Uh, I'm assuming that you will jump on the bandwagon and say you're for public safety.
I, I, I'm sure.
You might want to give up. That's very important that public safety be mentioned.
Well, I will tell you that it's very, very important. I, I, if you want to stay in the bandwagon, sure, I'll jump on. But yes, absolutely. Uh, there are deficiencies in public safety. So when talking with our fire chiefs, one of the aspects, uh, and I've grown up knowing some fire chiefs and folks in the fire department and, you know, talked to them over the years, is give me some vast knowledge of what's going on. Uh, so currently, as Bob kind of stated, we are grossing this under, or we're under fire stations in the city of Hanford. In fact, we only have the three. We have the one over on Grange Hill, we have the one on Houston, and we have the one that was just built here within the last four years, um, that's on Han, uh, on Hanford Road and twelve thousand. Those are the three. We're a population of sixty thousand people. That's a lot of people. That mean, and the statistics for that, it's called for one for every ten thousand people. One for every ten thousand. The, the plan should have been, whoever was on council, should have done what's called a capital improvement fund. Capital CIP. And what I mean by that is, if they were smart, they would have done what they should have done years ago, which was do a smoothing over a period of time of putting money aside to get to that fourth fire station. And then hopefully the next council would do it at the next one, and then the next one. So we're able to live with our means, but get to that point smart and effective. Because that was the course we should have done. Means no taxes raised on you, means a budget stays sound. And it means that CIP puts money aside every year over a smoothing period of over five, or, you know, six years, depending on how long it takes, to get that project done. Now, our police station, you brought up the police station. And also, by the way, response times are low right now because we don't have that fourth fire station. But we also have to equip it, and we also have to have the manpower for it. And that is the area we definitely have to look into to make sure that it's, and the police station, as you're aware, it's been, it's been piecemeal. It's been completely, you've got all these different little parts to it. In fact, I think it was two years ago, if I wasn't mistaken, at the council meeting, they approved, uh, because the parts that they have were outdated for the broadcasting, for the CD radios and the tower everything, seven hundred and fifty grand, from my understanding when I was there. I believe it was seven hundred and fifty, around about that, don't quote, about seven hundred and fifty. It was a lot of money. It was a lot of money. And the fact of the matter is, we can't just be paying for something that's already outdated. We have to look at something new, innovative and within modern, within modern times. So I completely agree with Bob. We've got to look into it. And there's opportunities. Sheriff Robinson was able to get his jail through Rudy Salz's office. That he brought in the vacant, so to speak. He brought it from Sacramento, was able to get his jail. Why can't we? Why can't we work with our state senator member who's now my boss and get that money? That's one great thing about this. I'm able to communicate with him. I'm able to say, hey, Hanford needs help with a new police station. Let's work together. Let's get something through that legislature. Let's bring some money into our city. Let's help bring in a new police station. It takes experience, dedication and time, but we can do it. I don't like the word can't. I like the word can. Can's a bad word. It's a poison. It's a poison. But can, we can. And I don't want to fail. One, that's the last thing I want, last thing I want. I want to make sure that we can be able to succeed. And the only way to do that is we work together, we're able to come to get that funding. And a lot of these things can be funded with, with the right way of doing it. And like I said, it takes experience, it takes leadership. It takes vision. Vision is how we build our city. We just have to continue forward.
Shane, I want to thank you for coming out of your manner.
Yeah, and if you have questions, if you want to, I can further answer your questions. If you have time, we can talk afterwards. Again, I, I have no problem talking about these things. I definitely want to talk about it if you do have questions. Just leave with me after. I'll, I'll talk to everyone, either individually or in group or whatever you prefer. Thank you so much, Lou.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Travis, go ahead. Our next speaker is Travis Payton. Travis, thanks for coming up and speaking to our educated audience here and, uh, get your platform. Uh, maybe you'll give us the ads, ask some questions. And, uh, if your mic is all yours, you have about half an hour to go into questions.
All right. I will take a half an hour talking about myself, but I will just share a little bit. And I want to ask you to ask me questions on where I stand on certain issues that are, um, meaningful to you. My name is Travis Payton and I am a born, raised, Hanford resident. I'm fifty-one years old and have been here all my life. I am a, um, proud son of my mother and father. I am a proud son of my mother and father that are here this evening. Um, my father, my father served valiantly in the U.S. Navy for twenty years. He's a Vietnam veteran and he worked even at eighty-five to help veterans. He's taken them trips to the VA back and forth, and so I'm honored to have you here, Dad. And my mother, no, let's give him a hand, thank you for your service. He also was a small business owner, called the Screen Man for the last forty-seven years. He was probably, oh, fifty years, fifty-three years, Dad, I'm sorry. But a small business here in Hanford. And it's, it was really cool to see generation after generation come back to him. And he says he's probably screened a couple of houses more than once over his, his tenure, which, which makes it really awesome. And my mom, who grew up driving a tractor at six years old as a dairy farmer, um, and she was, her parents were immigrated here from the Azores Islands and Portuguese and, um, grew up, she worked in a dental studio, uh, for about forty-seven years in downtown Hanford. And, um, my mother and father, they, my father is from Delaware. He came out here and was stationed down at the Moore Naval Air Station. And it's just so happened, ran into my mother, eighty-two days later, they got married. And they've been married fifty-eight years this evening. Wait, their anniversary is not tonight. So far, fifty-eight years, they'll be celebrating their anniversary October fifth. Um, and they said they got married once, once in the church and one in the justice of the peace. Because as soon as they got married, they shipped my father out to the Vietnam War where he was a Morse code operator on the seaplanes, where they flew over the South China Sea, um, and he would get the intelligence, do the Morse code to the aircraft carriers to nail the Chinese submarines. And so, um, I think that was, that was pretty cool to see. Um, as my father being an evangelical, my mother being Catholic, this Christianity has been a part of who I am all my entire life. Um, I, I grew up from, from as a little kid being in Cub Scouts all the way up through four H, through anything and everything, through student leadership in high school. Um, I was always known that someday I would be a leader. And I know my father and mother taught me how to be a leader, and that's just something, it just brought me to this location, but even, um, or this time in, uh, being in the Hanford City Council. But before that even happened, I have to say that it was, those along with hard work. As I graduated class of eighty-nine from Hanford High School, went on to graduate from College of, uh, College of the Sequoias with my associate's degree in mathematics, I went to the bachelor's degree to get my teaching credential and I majored in liberal studies. I also went back after my career, um, as a teacher. Um, I went to get back two master's degrees, one in administration and supervision and one in math science education with an emphasis in technology. And so with that, I went ahead and started my teaching career and I've been a teacher. I started my twenty-sixth year, twenty-sixth year at Woodrow Wilson Junior High School. One of those years I was able to have a baccalaureate to Charlotte, North Carolina, where I taught at the, um, Presidential School. Um, it was called Piedmont International Baccalaureate School, where it was honored by the George Bush administration as the number one middle school in the United States. It was really cool and it was an honor to be there. I had a presidential seal outside my door, which was kind of, um, interesting. But I was able to teach mathematics and science, excuse me, just mathematics there. Currently, I teach math and science at Woodrow Wilson. But I took math and science, I mean, excuse me, mathematics in North Carolina. It was a great, wonderful experience where I could bring information back and to help our students. One thing that I do, I was a past president of the Hanford Elementary Teachers Association, Teachers Union, where we were able to, before I became president, it was really interesting. There was a big, huge divide between our teachers as well as our administration. And so I came in with conservative principles and core values. And when I came to the, the role as president, there was a lot of, before that, there was a lot of striking, there was a lot of mediation, arbitration. And we were able to sell, in my two years of being president, we were able to sell two contracts in one day each with fully paid health benefits, uh, pay raises all the way through. And we, it was a win-win. And I think when we, as the city council members, go through collective bargaining and going through that, we need to make it a win-win, win for the city, but also win for the employees. Our employees work very hard for our city each and every day. They take pride in what they do and we need to make sure that they are honored for that. Um, going through, um, my education, my career, my educational career, I'm a certified Microsoft Innovative Educator, and so I'm an MIE, where I'm bringing technology into the classroom. I digitize my entire classroom and I am a hundred percent on, not online, but computers and teaching those skills for tomorrow for the students. Um, also, I'm a co-chair for our district, for the Hanford Elementary School District, on our technology advisory group. During COVID, distance learning became our life. It wasn't fun for the teachers, it wasn't fun for the parents, and it wasn't fun for the students. But it was something that we had to do and we worked really hard to try to get our students to be, maintain their education throughout. Um, one thing that I see that is so important, the reason why, I forgot to talk about it, I'll get in trouble. I like to, I like to, uh, I am married to my wife Anne Marie. That's a big one, yes, that would have been a big mistake. That would have been a big mistake. Married to my wife Anne Marie, we have six children. Um, we, I, we got married ten years ago and doing the math. It didn't happen in ten years, six children in ten years. Um, I married her, uh, with my children, twelve and under. And then we have our daughter Ava and she was our little honeymoon baby. And taking on that role is something that I would not change. Being, being a dad, a stepdad is not easy. I'm used to being the most unpopular person in the room, okay? And so when it comes to city council and sticking up for my core values, it doesn't bother me to be the most unpopular person in the room. I think that is very, very important. We are very active, our family is very active. From the time that I was little, my wife's now, I have to say, also I'll be in trouble if I don't introduce my in-laws as well. So my mother-in-law and father-in-law, Anthony and Yolanda, that's a bigger, I would have been a brilliant doghouse in that one. Um, but that is, I mean, I cannot be more blessed in my life to have my parents and my in-laws with us, and our parents with us right now. But as I said, we are very, a very active family, I've been active and I've always been involved in the community in any way that I possibly could because that was something that I think, I, it was just meaningful being here in Hanford and with six children, we have a rule in our house, one sport per kid, per season. And so through that time, I have been through every single sport probably that you can imagine, from cheerleading, volleyball, track and field, um, gymnastics, softball, I'm a softball player here, um, baseball, um, parkour, um, you may get into their beautiful seniors as well. I mean, I tried, but you know, and then musical theater, choirs and all that stuff. We are very active in the community. And that's one thing that I hold value to is being active in this community. And I've been there all my entire life. Um, now that we have over six children, four are adults, they're on their own. And so we only have two children in the house. So it's, it's not, I couldn't, I couldn't do this job, I think, with six children, all in the house, changing diapers, doing all that stuff. It would take a special person to do that. I think I could handle it, but I really do believe that, um, being a full-time, um, parent a hundred percent of the time is so important to me and it's the memories that we have and we have loved every single moment of our time. When it comes to, um, talking about, it's kind of hard, I'm talking about myself. I don't know exactly what else I could, um, I have some notes, hold on just one moment. Um, as I said, blending a family and being a stepdad has prepared me to do this work. I am ready definitely to take on this role in the Hanford City Council. Um, one thing that, I would not be doing this without the support of my wife and my family. I'll be honest with you. And over the past ten years, I've prepared more to take this, on this role than I've ever been. I love our city. I have no aspirations to being a career politician or being someone to go to a higher office. Hanford is where I want to be. This is where I'm raising my children, this is where I grew up, this is where I want to raise my grandchildren. And what do I need to do, being a part of the city council, to make sure that every single one of my kids want to come back? They have the necessary jobs and the resources and the, um, family to be there, to be here in Hanford. And also, I just want to see our cities thrive. That is something that is extremely important to me. So even though I was prepared, a long time ago, twelve years ago, some of you may not know, twelve years ago, I was asked to run for city council. I was asked to run for city council and that was me as a single father. And I had the degrees, I had everything, I had the volunteerism, I had all of that stuff. If you checked all the boxes, I had. But one thing that I did not have, and it was not until after I got married, that I started seeing the issues with the city from a different set of lenses. I started thinking about my family, how I want to protect my family. I started to see like what things do I want for my kids? What do people enjoy to do? And I started looking at that and I started thinking that, man, I'm a, I was a good possible possibility as a candidate back then. But now, I'm so much better. And so I see that I have been able to grow through being these experiences of being a father and a stepfather, a husband. And it's just, it's just something that is, um, near and dear to my heart. And we are the family, excuse me. And I said, these life experiences not only, um, forwards me, but defined me. And so I am ready to lead. I've been a leader all my life, whether it is in the classroom, developing the students and some of my former students' parents are here this evening, that I didn't even know that they were going to be here. But it was just, it was just amazing to see, to see my students each and every day throughout as I walk here. They're like, hey, Mr. Payton, hey, Mr. Payton, remember me? And believe it or not, it's weird, but we do. Even though I see them before they start shaking and before they, uh, are, um, but it's the eyes and the smile, but it's also the connection that we make on a daily basis of being in my classroom. One thing that I also do this year, I teamed up with Fast Credit Union this year in my math class to teach Dave Rennies' middle school curriculum. So for the future of our students to be more fiscally and financially sound in making financial decisions. And so they are eating it alive. And it's so, so awesome to see. And we want to expand that program even more to more teachers. And I just really appreciate their trust that they have in me as we are building up the future for tomorrow. And last but not least, even as having a full-time job, even having six children in their house, for the last twelve years, I've been volunteering my time, um, on the planning commission for eight years. And before that, the parking and traffic commission for four years. I was vice chair of the parking and traffic commission, but currently on the planning commission, I'm the vice chair. I was the vice chair for two years and I was the chairman on the planning commission for two years as well. So those are those commitments that I've been involved with the city. I definitely am a teacher, so I better do my homework. And if I don't know the answer, I'm definitely going to find it and then, because research is my thing. You know, doing my homework, doing the research, um, doing the, the theses that I was, that I needed to do for my master's degrees. It really, you want to know the evidence, you want to be able to support the reason why you were standing up for what you stand up for. And so those are things that I would like to turn over to you now, just to ask questions. This is a little bit about me, but I want you to be able to ask me, see where I stand on certain issues and hopefully I can answer them and if not, I will definitely, um, answer them for you, uh, get an answer for you. All right, Larry D.
All right, give Travis a hand. You already know the first question, traffic circles, roundabouts, whatever you would talk, yes or no?
Yes or no? All right, first of all, I'm not absolutely one hundred percent opposed to the traffic, uh, circles or roundabouts. And I'll tell you that that is the honest to God truth. But what I do not like right now is when this is being posed to our, uh, community and not a lot of information was given out there to them. But you have to have a plan. You can't just go ahead and spend money without a major plan that you have communicated to the community or to the city. You have to have a plan. The plan that I looked up was in two thousand, uh, when Marcy Buford was the vice mayor at the time. And I believe Stan LaCrisis was the mayor at that time, where they had sixty, they developed a downtown plan of what they wanted their downtown to look like. They had over sixty people, including the, uh, the city council, the planning commission, and a lot of different downtown businesses and people coming in to put input into this plan. The twenty eighteen plan for the traffic circles had maybe eight to ten people on the committee, some business owners, but a lot of city staff. And so I'm asking this, like, what does the community want? And so that's why I'm saying I'm not absolutely opposed to it. Because I don't want to be on record saying, no to traffic circles and turn around. And if it's in the plan, if it's in the plan, we have parking issues downtown. Do we need a parking structure? How do we want our, how do we have to revitalize our sidewalks, our streets, our, um, our businesses and providing brains for them to have proper lighting so the homeless doesn't become an issue? What is the overall plan? And I want to collaborate with the entire community so they can get that input so we can move forward.
We can open up questions to the audience, if you have a question, feel free to raise your hand and pass my ground. Ernie?
Ernie.
Hold on, Ernie, I'll bring your mic.
Hey, I'm not dropping nice tonight.
Why?
How you doing Travis?
How are you?
All right. I'd like to start this saying, I've got a vision. And the vision is, is that one day our city council will realize that we have to fix what's broke before we put new stuff up. I'm watching just my neighborhood roads that went in the seventies fall apart. They put, they put the stuff on the road that was a waste of time. What it was a bigger waste of was our money. I've got a beautiful art show going on daily with graffiti. And the graffiti is right where that gentleman was saying they want to put this, um, what do they call it?
Class one trail.
Oh, the trails, there you go. And I'm pretty sure the trails are going to be a trail for the gangs and they'll take them over and the graffiti will continue. If we don't start fixing what's broke in our town, we won't have a town for your all's visions that spend our money. Why aren't we spending money that is being spent on the traffic circles to fix our roads? One neighborhood at a time. Why don't we spend the money to get somebody to stop the graffiti when it happens? So they don't see it and put more up.
Good question. Ernie, I can't answer that question because I'm not on the city council to that, that controls the purse strings. We have the majority of the city council here tonight, you could probably ask them personally that question. But let me tell you what I would do. First of all, that class one trail is quite interesting. And talking to people's digits, probably twelve, fourteen hundred dollars per linear foot to develop. And talking to Brad Albert, there was over six million dollars from to go from Flint to Houston Avenue for that class one trail. I am a conservative, and remember I told you about those rose colored glasses? That when I was from a single person to now being married, I started thinking more so about my family and my children. There is no way, no way that I see in certain parts of that trail that it's going to be safe for a mother and for children to walk on. There is no way.
How about the ones of us who live on that trail? And we throw the stuff at our stepmother?
Exactly, and for the people that all of a sudden now that never had a backyard or back, um, resident, people traveling through their backyard from their fence, now having high traffic through them. That is not necessarily, I think, the best use of our money.
Ding ding.
I do not think, and I think it's very important, I made it important when I went for the appointment of the city council last year, when it was between me and my opponent in the final two, is that I think you need to have a math teacher on the city council to do the budget and know the numbers before you start, because if you before you start, because if you don't know the numbers, you don't have, and you don't have a plan, what is going to be thrown away is a lot of taxpayers' money. And that's what I think is very important, to handle the graffiti. And talking about one thing that I think, and Shane hit it up, that the parks have had their issues. And I agree with him on that. And just one the other day, in the Bob Hill Sports Complex, we know it, if we've lived here all our life, it's the Bob Hill Sports Complex. It's not Yak. First of all, it's not the Yak, it was being the Bob Hill Sports Complex. And if you go in that football field, the two fields in the basin, they have 86 plus lights that are burnt out. There are football players, the 150 football players that are practicing, and some of them are practicing in the dark. That was brought to my attention, that was brought to other candidates' attention, and we went forth straight through to Brad Albert, to Mario Seflin, just to find an answer. But my question is, why hasn't the parks director at that time, before a sports season starts, meet with the football board and say, "How's our sprinklers doing? How's our water faucets? How is the lighting? How is the, the restrooms and the snack bar, everything?" Why isn't that done? In conversation back from Brad Albert today, he's like, "We failed in that area. We should have met with the, the board at that time to discuss those issues." And to answer your question, Ernie, is yes, why aren't we planning ahead? Why aren't we being proactive instead of reactive? And I think that is super, you can't leave always reacting something. You have to be proactive and thinking ahead. And I think that's something that's important. Why to handle the graffiti, as you were saying? What policies does our city have put in place to address that issue? Because I know from as a school teacher at Woodrow Wilson, we used to get tagged all the time. Until we started putting the gates and the fences around, because we have a lot of technology in our classroom. But we used to get tagged all the time. Our custodian, they had a policy on the school board, we did not want to look like an inner-city school. We did not want to allow graffiti to stay on that wall and for kids to see. So our custodian would get there at 6 o'clock every single morning to start his shift, and he would pull out a paintbrush, have the school in the areas of the graffiti, and not just like a square around the graffiti, he would do the whole wall, so the students never saw. Or not the satisfaction, "Hey, I tagged this place." But they never saw where that graffiti was. What type of policy do we have in place for graffiti? You know, I will look into that. But this is something that I think we need to start thinking ahead as opposed to, and being proactive instead of reactive.
Good question. All right, Lynn, I'm coming to you.
Hi.
Hello.
I asked, in the Little League field, the snack bar?
Yes.
That is coming down, the air conditioning.
The air conditioning on the snack bar is currently not stable.
Right, so maybe three months ago, I asked parks about that. They said they sent it out to get a bid. The bid was too high, and it's still not fixed. And I said, "Well, you're waiting for somebody to have..."
It's a safety issue, absolutely it's a safety issue.
And so, it's still sitting there, so what can we do in order? And I realized that some of these people are out there fixing it on their own dime.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And so, what can we do about that?
Well, to give you a little history too, the very first year that the field opened, that's the first year I was on Little League. In the same concession stand, in this, I was playing in Little League. I hit my first home run. I, you were present at that time, small world. You know, I had my first home run on that Little League field. That concession stand was there brand new. And that second story of the concession stand was designed for the people to call out, and I believe my dad would call out some of the gangs out there. But now, you can't even put anybody on the second floor. It's terrible. That asphalt, if I remember correctly, that asphalt is the same asphalt that when I was there, as a Little League, to my daughter's age, like about eight or nine years old. That is something about when we continue as a city to continue to kick the can down the road. That's the issue, and that's what I'm gonna bring to the city council, is, I am organized, I like to be organized. You could walk in, and custodians say, "I pretty much have the cleanest classroom in the school," but I'm not gonna just, there's a lot of clean classrooms in the school, and he might be being kind, but I'm a very organized man. And I think that it's very important that we need to lay out this plan. We need to be proactive instead of reactive. Because right now, we are paying the price of a lot of cans being kicked down the road in our city, and we need to change that. We need to change that, and I plan to do that. Please do, because when we're talking, we're talking about accountability. I think that is very important. Please, when I'm saying, what I'm saying here tonight, please hold me accountable. Because if I'm not, I'll take myself out, I'll be honest with you. I need, no recall is needed. If I'm not doing the job, I'll take myself out.
Okay, so, the can issue and the trail issue.
Yes.
Right now, People's Ditch, we call People's Ditch to complain, they kick the can to the city. We call it the city, they kick the can to People's Ditch. So if this plan is to go through, who's gonna be responsible for the trail? Is it People's Ditch? Do they sell the land deed or whatever to the city?
I'm not, you know, to be honest with you, I'm not behind closed doors in those discussions. And being on the council, I would be behind closed doors, learning more about it, and I don't have that information. But the information that I give to you is when I was a part of the HARP program, and going on a ride along, we found a lot of homeless that were under, on Greenshaw Avenue, they were under, in People's Ditch underneath the street. And so, I scheduled a meeting with the gentleman that owns People's Ditch, and had it, and so, and I asked him, because he's concerned, he's concerned for his employees, because every time they have to scrape People's Ditch, he's concerned that his employees are gonna get by needles and having a lot of issues with it clogging up, because there's so much debris that is just left over when, when they, when they leave and go somewhere else. And so, those are concerns, and he says, he mentioned to me that the city and their board, you know, split 50/50 on the cost of him cleaning out the homeless. And so, to answer your question on the class one trail, I don't know necessarily. I mean, because if you're thinking 12, 14 hundred dollars per linear foot, and that's from Brad Albert, when he mentioned that to me at that time, with the inflationary costs, it could be even more, about time the, if that class one trail even came to fruition, it might be a whole lot more than $6 million. And that's, I asked myself, is that the effective use of the money that we have for the city? By bringing in new stuff without fixing the old stuff? Okay, so much is given, much is expected. And so, people are expecting. We have great things here in our town, and we need to make sure that we take care of those things.
I've heard, I've heard Sam that, since you have a full-time job, it might be hard for you to devote enough time to the city council. How can you address that issue?
Great. The question was, since I have a full-time job, oh, excuse me. Since I have a full-time job, how can I be on the city council? Devote enough time, most of it? Sure, sure. There is a lot of issues, there is a lot of issues. And first of all, city council is not to be made a full-time job. That's not how our structure works. We're a city council, city manager type job, where we have city staff that does a lot of the day-to-day information. The purpose of the city council is to create policy. Is to create policy and provide a vision and provide direction. And then, we have the city staff, the city manager and the city staff to provide that. Every, we have had some amazing council members. And I want to say, pretty much, every city council member that we have had has had, through the history of Hanford, has had a full-time job. There was doctors, there was lawyers. I talked to Dave Rears, you know, in my conversations with him, and I'm like, "How did you do this?" And he said, "I had, I was a physical therapist, I had two jobs. I worked 50, 60 hours a week and served my community well." It can be done. It's how you organize and manage your time is what really matters. And I've had a conversation, and I want to bring this up because it's important for us to know, that I spoke to Marcy Buford, who was a businesswoman, owned an oil company, Buford Oil, in the city of Hanford. And I had, I had lunch with her, probably six weeks ago. And when I talked to her, just with what I was talking about, just council, and, you know, these are my aspirations, and what wisdom can you share? She is, first of all, has served on the council for 20 years. She is the longest-serving woman on the city council. And I copied it, and I have it in my phone, because she says, "The most effective council members are not those who need the money nor want the power." If Hanford can get five people like that to serve, Hanford would be well. I think that with a, you know, if we're supposed to have a full-time job, it's a non-issue. It's absolutely a non-issue. Yeah, once something done, ask a busy person. Yes, thank you.
One question about the trails.
Okay.
Would it possible to have sponsors to help people? As opposed to, we have one of the city companies sponsoring them?
We can't do anything one with a lot of money. You know, if people want to sponsor, if we can get sponsors that want to fork over $6 million, you know? I'd like to put $3 million, get a sponsor, put $3 million to have an Olive Garden. That's what I'd like, kind of, for, so. I have a little closet and a steakhouse restaurant, let's say that.
I like a little bit of breadsticks and salad, too.
I'm a small business owner here in town. I know a couple of my... I have a couple of, I know a couple of vendors that are trying to do some upgrades and move their business to a better location, things like that. And they're really struggling with help with the city planning to get stuff done, as far as, so anyway, you know, we need taxes to pay for this stuff. So if we can bring our business to town, we have revenue. Is there a plan for that, if you've heard of it yet?
Well, I think there's, there's been a lot of issues in the planning department. You know, the planning department, I've experienced that at the time. We lost our community development director, Darlene Motta, and we will not divulge any of the specifics on that, because pretty much the community knows. But we, we have a senior planner, we have an assistant planner. Do we, do we have co, a building inspector, maybe a second building inspector, if I correct on that? I'm not necessarily sure. But addressing your part about businesses, what type of service? Because the city, the city responds to the people, is accountable by the people, and what type of services are we providing for those new businesses coming in? Are we doing a lot of red tape and having them jump through hoops? What, what is that policy and what is that procedure that needs to be improved on? And I really do think there is a lot of improvement that needs to be done. And so, as a city council member, it's meeting with the planning department. Now, we have a deputy city manager, we have Gabby as our senior planner, we have Mark Hughes, our assistant planner, and then, we have a support staff going through there. But it's like, what is necessary? When a person comes in and says, "I would like to open this type of business," what do those steps look like? Do I get to go to you, and then I get turned here, and then I'm confused? Because what you told me, you didn't tell me. You told me something totally different. I kind of look at it as like a case manager of some sort. You have one person that follows them through the whole entire process. I think that is most effective, because they can answer one, the new business is working about, you know, getting their business started, and all of these fees and all of this, the charges that they are experiencing, you know, you have to redo this, or you have to do this, but he told me this, she told me that. And I think we need to improve on that, because I don't think we are being as efficient as we could be in the planning department.
Travis?
Yes, sir.
Recently, we had a conversation where you were talking about your experiences on the HARP team, and you went to the police department and so forth. As a result of that experience that you had, you thought that maybe there should be a new building for the police department. Could you share with people what your vision is and your ideas on that?
Absolutely. Being a part of the, looking at the general, 2035 general plan, and Shane addressed it, but I would like to address it again. Hanford is projected to be at 90,000 people. 90,000 people. Currently, right now, we are at 60,000. That means in the next 13 years, we will have a 50% increase in our population. Still no state house. Fifty, 50% increase. My question is, is our police department growing at a 50% increase to manage that, those 90,000? Is our fire department growing at a 50% increase to make sure that we can provide a level of service, meet our response call time, response times for 90,000 people? Now, looking at our growth, I'm not sure exactly if we're going to get there, because we are having between 1.2 to 1.7% population increase in over the next 13 years. It's not gonna add up to 50%. I think we might be personally around 75%, but you never know with the base coming in, the new squadrons coming in, that how our city is gonna grow. And so, there is a lot of homes in development that are taking place. But what I believe is that we need to be looking, I'm a researcher, I'm a, I want to look at the numbers. I really want to look at the numbers and get in there and see in our budget how we can make sure, because even right now, our fire department is at 0.5, 0.51% fully staffed. We're half-staffed pretty much. We're not only do we need a fourth station, we need a fifth station and a sixth station. How is that gonna come about? And why? And one firefighter said to me, and goes, "At what point can a sub-citizen sue the city for dereliction of duty? Because they are not providing adequate service, because they are so low on the number of people in our, in our city, and we're not meeting those numbers." That was from a firefighter. So what I'm saying here, we tried to pass Measure F, we tried to pass Measure K, we tried to pass Measure F, or not, we didn't try to pass Measure, we, we fought against Measure F because of that certain reason that it wasn't gonna benefit the city. So my question to you is, how are, because we were a small city, small, considered a small city with big city problems. No longer are we gonna be at 90,000, gonna be considered that small city, but we still have those big city problems. I think we need to, being on the HARP, being on that day that I spent on the HARP team, from 7 o'clock to 5 o'clock at night, was some of the most life-changing, eye-opening experiences that I've had. Seeing the people that are homeless and what we're doing to help them. And the resource officers, our officer Curio and officer Smith are working really hard on a daily basis. We definitely need to address those, our police and our fire, and how are we going to do it? Some people said, "Should we put a tax initiative out? Should we do like Measure F and put a tax initiative and come to the people?" And I said, "You know what? I, I have a real, I have hesitation on that." Before I even sign up for a tax initiative, I think what we need right now is the city does not trust how the current council is spending the money. And before, we have to say that we are being good stewards of the tax dollars that we currently have. And I think that we need to show the city that we say what we mean, we mean what we say, we have a project, we're gonna put it through fruition, and then, we're gonna make it happen. That's first and foremost. Second, third, you need to have a sunset clause, you need to have an outside organization to manage and make sure there's that level of accountability, how the funds are being started. There's a lot of components, and one, establishing a vision, establishing a plan. What are we gonna get with our money? A high school has passed a bond. They have parking lots, swimming pools, inner, career centers, computer labs, and, you know, all that. career centers, computer labs, you know, all that. I watched the video the other day, and it was beautiful, and it's like, "Hey, guys, you voted for this bond? Look what your money bought the high schools." What does our video look like for the city of Hanford? What does our video say? Here, this is what we've done with all the ninety-seven million dollars in our budget this year. This is what we've done with your money. Have we been good stewards of the people's money? We need to start thinking that because we need police, we need fire, our parks are in utter disarray. There's fertilizer burn marks on Civic Parks. Civic Parks, the roses are not even where they used to be. Growing up, we used to love going down to Civic Park. The beautiful roses, the green lush grass. That was not the, today is not the Hanford that I grew up in. And I think some of you didn't grow up in this type of Hanford that we're living in today.
Travis, I've been to several council meetings, and I keep hearing from the council, "Well, I think that staff had brought this to us, and the city manager and staff brings this to us. How are you going to interact with staff?" Because I have a perception, me personally, that staff and council, council just listens to whatever staff says and doesn't do their own diligence of what's being said. How are you planning on dealing with that?
Well, my point of view is, if you don't have a full-time job, why is staff bringing it to you instead of you bringing it to staff? Why aren't you doing your due diligence, reading the staff report? Somebody asked me, "What was the last book that I read?" I said, "A staff report." Because when you have a five to seven-hundred-page staff report, it is a huge book, and if you need to know, you need to do the research. Staff is providing direction by the council. The council should be providing staff the direction. Many times, and I've been at the city council over the last fifteen months and going to every single meeting, I'm kind of wondering, it's like, who's driving the ship? And that's, that's important to me. That is, if it's supposed to come, and the council's supposed to give directives to the city manager, so he can go, it, it needs to have, it's a little backwards in my opinion, yes.
Any last questions before we wrap up this session?
Is that, is that that quick? That is homelessness. The question is, what, you know, what can you do about homelessness? It is such a complex issue. You know, Supervisor Nez was here last week, or a couple of weeks ago, I should say. And he was talking about the three types of homeless that there are, everything. And I mean, the churches are doing an amazing job. The Tiny House Project, the Stardust Motel, is something about keeping the funding. I'm not necessarily, you know, versed on that exact, you know, the type of funding, but I talked to the people at Stardust, and they were educating us on, it's interesting that at the Stardust Motel, that the people are saying, there's no work component. I think we need to gradually, because my father always told me, you know, you can give a man a fish, and you can feed him for the day, but if you teach a man this, you can feed him for a lifetime. And so I think that it has to have that gradual, you know, in, it's a lack of a term, I don't want to say, step-by-step process to get them re-acclimated into society. The mental health issues that we experienced, and this is one last, talking about the homeless, there were so many homeless people that I spoke to on that day that were not from Hanford. That were not from Hanford. One gentleman, we took a meth pipe from, he was kind of out of it by the Antract Station, and he was from Georgia. He's from Georgia, and has an unextraditable warrant, I think that's how you say it, please tell me if I'm correct. Is that how I say, is that how I would say? That we can't send them back to Georgia because Georgia doesn't want them. He's permanently, he can't come back to Georgia, so we have them here. We have them here. The saddest part, the saddest part, when I was going through that experience, is when I saw one gentleman, Anthony, as we were talking, and he was saying, "You know, I went to Hanford High School," and all of a sudden. And I said, "What junior high did you go to?" And he said, "Woodrow Wilson." And I said, "Anthony, I missed you, Peter. You were in my class." And immediately, tears came down his eyes, my eyes. It is, it's heartbreaking, because I said, "Remember what we talked about in class? About never giving up, and we had taken the meth pipe from him as well. And Anthony, like, what resources can we get to you?" He's like, "I know, Mr. Peter, I know, I know." We need to work together. The board of supervisors, the city council, I would like to get us all in the same room. Now, I know there's a homeless collaborative, we have representatives representing, but let's get the whole city council, let's get the whole supervisors, bring in all the different resources, representatives from the police, the fire, the HARP team. Let's talk about what are those steps when somebody comes in. Anthony was the only person from Hanford. The other people that I talked to from Hanford, I asked them, and not, other people that were not from Hanford, I asked them, I said, "Why are you here?" And they said two things. One, it's a lot safer than in a big city to be here. We get two meals a day. And then, I could go on the street corner, and this is their words, not my words. I could go on the street corner, get a couple bucks to buy my drugs for the evening. They were very frank, and that's the reality that we're living in, because we are Christian people, we want to help people, but we also want to help those who want to help themselves. That we need to provide those resources for them and help them with those resources and make it clear. Another one said, "The reason why I stayed here is because I was told I could get in a home in six months, but in essence, it's two to three years." And so, those are concerns, we need to be upfront. Sorry, Larry, I just kind of went off on a little tangent there, you know? But that's, there's a lot of things that we need to do. We need to pull all of our resources together and really dig in deep to see what we can do to address this issue.
Thanks for coming here, Travis. I just want to personally thank you, I appreciate you being here.
And just really quickly, if you go to elect Travis Peter on Facebook and Instagram to follow me to see more of what I believe. If you would like a sign, there's articles, there's a card, there's window decals for your cards, if you'd like that as well. They're all right there on the table. Please feel free to talk to me, and if you didn't get your questions answered tonight, I'd be more happy. You've been an amazing, awesome audience, and thank you so much.
All right, you know, real quick, before we say goodnight, I just wanted to ask a question. We mentioned the Bob Hill Youth Sports Complex. I've spent a lot of time out there over the years. And so, you mentioned that snack bar there and the second floor. So I just want to ask real quick, on behalf of all the sports announcers in the greater Hanford area, if there's going to be some amenities on the new, the new snack bar for sports announcers who live in this community? I think it's important, right?
I, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily know that yet. So I know that the city council did allocate some funds, some COVID money, I think half a million dollars, towards a new, a new sports announce, a new snack bar location. The last I had talked to Brad Albert about it was moving that location from there in between the football field and the baseball fields, the rugby field off of campus. I disagreed with him on that, I couldn't see the vision on that, and things could have changed since the last time I talked to him about that specific issue. But being on council, I think it needs to stay right where it is to service the baseball stadium. And then, if we need to do a duplicate snack bar like they have for Hanford United, over onto the Hanford Rebels Field and have restrooms over there, I think that's something that we need to look into as well.
I want to take the time to thank Travis for coming out.
Thank you very much.
I think it's important for our officials, for our candidates to come out to love and speak to this type of forum, or maybe if you can, if you have any more, I'd like to work to, to put your platforms out. We're providing that service, and we appreciate every way that the work is paid. Mark Two of Mark Three, Nancy, you also have. Francisco coming out to speak. So if you made the first few, please make the third, and if not, it will be livestreamed. But inform yourself, before you make a decision, don't base, don't place a vote based upon name recognition or association. Place your vote based upon people making decisions that are near your heart, what you think your community should look like. All right, we have the red tub going around, if you can throw a little bucks, it's on the next thing. All right, thank you very much.